Mr. Kirby?
[BLEEP]. No.
Profanity. Applause. Hissing and boo.
Hissing is not permissible.
As superintendents around the valley are forced out of their jobs.
I want to say this very clearly, that I think if Dr. Battle looked a little more like me and a little less like a [BLEEP].
Heather was pushed and bullied, and the way that this board has treated her in the last couple of months is shameful.
And some of the most controversial issues in our country today.
This is the biggest rift that I have ever seen.
Brooming and the trans ideology.
So disappointed.
Exhausted, and not because my kids are exhausting, but because of this political outrage.
Turn school board meetings into the next political battleground.
That's not how we're supposed to be working. It's not right. It's not good for our students.
Have you attended a school board meeting recently? It is not just budgets and Spelling Bee awards. Although you'll find those, and congratulations, by the way, to Opal, honored at the Chandler Unified Board Meeting I recently attended. The sixth grader placed second in the state and goes on to the nationals. Good luck to Opal. We can all agree, those moments represent the truly best of school board meetings. But when we talk about what we're seeing today, there's something taking place that is different. We are seeing an eruption of emotions during these meetings. During public comment period, parents and teachers and students can say whatever is on their mind, which they should be able to. To witness many school board meetings right now, though, is to see some of America's deepest divisions close up. So what are school board members expected to do? Is partisanship interfering with sound policy? Are superintendents and teachers getting unfairly targeted? And where does state law take over? We're taking a look at some of these questions with three experts in education. Mari Sol Garcia, president of the Arizona Teachers Association, is with us. Chris Cotterman, director of government relations for the Arizona School Boards Association, representing school boards across the state. And Margaret Garcia Dugan, deputy superintendent of the Arizona Department of Ed, representing Superintendent Tom Horn. All right, first, I just want to show you kind of a sample of some of the concerns we're hearing at board meetings right now. These are from the last month from several districts in the valley. Take a listen.
Families are not free when teachers send pronouns surveys that ask students if they should hide the pronouns from parents. As a parent, I'm here to say enough.
For my children and my grandchildren to grow in a community, I'm looking for leaders that understand the nuance of economic, racial, cultural differences.
While you're fixated on race, real problems are getting worse for students. After years of abuse from lockdowns, social distancing, and insane masking policies in this district, they are in desperate need of help.
Across Arizona, we are going to be walking out 10 high schools. We have a few demands for you that we need you to enforce to assure that our schools are a safe space for these students.
There are only two genders. It's sick and sad to see this district preying on the vulnerabilities and mental health issues of children.
As a member of this district, I want to make it clear, the trans people exist. The hateful rhetoric and proposed policies are not only discriminatory but also harmful.
You can identify however you want, but I don't have to participate in your delusion, and don't teach it to our children.
I won't go into the statistics about the absurdly high suicide rates of LGBTQ+ youth, but implementing policies that are focused on making the classroom more uncomfortable for students, that are statistically some of the most vulnerable in the country and in this district, that doesn't set them up for success.
The parents, we want teachers and administrators to focus on traditional curriculum like math and reading. Our schools are not incubators to experiment the latest call for social justice.
Parents should not be able to tell schools what to teach. Many parents have neither the education nor intelligence to make these decisions for all of us.
Be careful when we start talking about social emotional learning and people demonizing it. We have to reach these kids.
You're supposed to equally be focused on all students. Your open racism toward white people with differing values and yourself does not scream inclusion for me.
Frankly, I'm exhausted, and not because my kids are exhausting, but because of this political outrage that has consumed our society, that we're in a zero-sum society where it's one or the other. That's not how we're supposed to be working. It's not right. It's not good for our students.
And that was a parent in the Scottsdale Unified District. I think we can all agree on many of the points he made. It feels like a zero-sum game now. Chris, is this a new phenomenon we're seeing at school boards?
I think it's certainly more exaggerated. You've always had, you know, political differences in the community since time immemorial, right? But COVID, I think, did place a spotlight on a number of educational issues. And ever since COVID, we've seen, I think as a result of just enhanced focus on school policy, but also the political arena that's just become more polarizing since COVID, has bled over into school boards. And they are elected officials. It is, and you know, you're closest to people when you're dealing with their children, right? And they get the most upset and the most protective about that. And so, yeah, I think that there's always been some community divisions, but they're heightened now, no question about it.
Absolutely. Mari Sol, you know all the teachers out there and what they're telling you as you see some of those comments. What goes through your mind?
I mean, it's disappointing because it seems like there continues to be a national narrative that wants to villainize and exploit issues that are happening in public schools and, more importantly, public educators. I mean, we every day hear from educators across the state who are afraid to go to work, unsure of what new headline is going to be coming out, what's going to be said about them. And they too are parents and community members and are really committed and doing great work. And, but it has been exacerbated, and there's been some fear mongering about what's happening and just lack of understanding. It is new. Five years ago, Joe, we went out on strike, right, with parents alongside us and principals and school board members. So five years ago, we were in a healthy space where we all knew we were fighting for our kids, but five years later, we are in a completely different space because it has been politicized.
Deputy Superintendent Dugan, one reason that many of these parents are angry and voicing frustrations is because they are carrying out a platform of Superintendent Horn. He wants change. Is it possible that board members are being unfairly targeted and being expected to solve social problems that are beyond the control of schools?
I think school board members that are on these school boards are there to protect children and to make sure that children are being taught the academics that they were taught when they were in school. I believe that they go on for those two reasons. And Superintendent Horn has been very outspoken about teaching academics. We are laser focused at the Department of Ed. We've talked to many teachers who feel that teaching is no longer just teaching the academics that they are trained for. Many of them do not like having to teach social emotional learning techniques or strategies or go to trainings. They just want to go back to what they were trained for. I think it's unfair that teachers are now being put under a microscope when some of them really don't want to be part of the indoctrination that's going on in our schools. And I think that's a big reason why they're leaving the profession. They want to be an English teacher, math teacher, social studies teacher, whatever they studied for.
They didn't sign up for this.
They did not sign up to be harassed.
Let's talk about a couple of these specific issues. Unisex bathrooms, that was referenced in these. What would Superintendent Horn advise a district on whether to have a unisex bathroom designated on a campus?
I think he would stand for having separate bathrooms, one for boys and one for girls.
Absolutely. Well, those already, we know are there to say designate another bathroom. So we know that some districts are trying to figure this out. They may be using a faculty bathroom to now designate, you know, for a student who identifies as binary or transgender. Decent compromise?
I believe if you're born a boy, you go to the boys' bathroom. A girl, go to the girls' bathroom.
Chris, how many districts are finding a compromise on this issue?
Well, I think, again, there's two issues. There's the political issue, and then there's the facilities issue, right? You have buildings in this state that are 50, 60, you know, even 20, 30 years old that you can't just, you can't just create new spaces, right? But you do see schools addressing this in their new construction. They will take that into account because they do want to solve these problems, and they don't want controversy. But as far as right now, school districts are charged with minimizing disruption. That is their main goal in life, right? Minimize disruption and make sure that students can access the purpose that they're there, which is to learn. And so, in order to do that, you know, they, most of them find that taking up the issue of, we're going to make sure that all biological males use the boys' bathroom and all biological females use the girls' bathroom, is more disruptive than just addressing these issues on a case-by-case basis. And so what you see a lot of the time is districts making accommodations for students to make sure that those students feel safe and that disruption is minimized. And that's how they've handled it ever since this became an issue writ large.
Okay, let's go to students using their preferred pronouns. One student spoke at a board meeting last week. He said, "Look, we're worrying about SATs and finals and being ready for the school play." He said, "You guys are talking about something that we really don't, you know, think about that much." Is there unwarranted hysteria over something like the pronouns issue in classrooms? I'm sure a lot of teachers talk to you, Mari Sol.
Yeah, I mean, this really doesn't happen too often. I'll be honest, in all my years teaching, I use the student's first name, you know, so to identify them. And they're really focused in, and I want them to walk in and be ready and feel trustful and safe so that they can learn about the Civil War, right? I don't spend a lot of time dealing with this. There isn't a lot of energy and time administration doing it with it. What we just see is, you know, a lot of uncertainty and unfamiliar with the issue at hand. And so instead of trying to come together and understand it, there's just an initial reaction that we're trying to do something to children, and it's unfortunate. But my job, when I greet those students at the door, is to make sure they feel safe so that they can put their shoulders down and learn social studies.
I would imagine Superintendent Dugan, and you said I can refer to you as Margaret, right?
Call me Margaret.
Margaret, you've been a teacher.
And a principal.
If you had a child come to you and say, "Can you please call me by this name? This is what I'm most comfortable with," you know the importance of that relationship between a teacher and a child. Wouldn't you, would you think, okay, you know what, for the sake of our relationship, I'm going to do that?
Personally, as a teacher, I would tell the child or a student, I'd say, "I'm going to call you by your name." I don't really feel that my job as a teacher is to get between that child and the parent. I don't know what the parent is wanting, and I don't want to be part of a controversy between my student and the parent.
Would it be okay to ask the child, is it, let's, can we talk to your parents about this? And would you be, would you say that's a reasonable thing for a teacher to do?
Again, I don't, I think teachers, their job is to teach all children with respect and treat them with dignity. But I also believe that we, teachers are being used for indoctrination and also to discuss sexual identities in the classroom. That's not what they signed up for. And to put a teacher in that position, I think, is wrong. I am very, very concerned about education today, and I've been in this business a long time. I've never seen it in such a crisis where teachers feel that they're being used by the political ideology that's going on in this country, and that's unfair to them. I had a teacher tell me that a student asked her to refer to him as a he in the morning and a she in the afternoon. That is too much for a teacher to have to deal with on a daily basis.
And I think we could, we could agree that's probably an anomaly.
It might be an anomaly.
And the entire issue is also rare. But Chris, in a couple of sentences, what are districts doing about this?
Education is a relationship business, and so most districts are trying to make policy that allows their teachers to have the best relationship with their students possible to, again, not disrupt that relationship that enables learning. And so when we see state-level legislation that attempts to force everyone into the same box is where we get involved because we say, this is, this is the governing board's issue to deal with and make sure that their teachers and their students can have the best relationship possible to facilitate that.
Okay. Well, let's talk about social and emotional learning. Superintendent Horn wants it out, right? He wants it purged from schools, his office said recently. Recent social emotional learning presentations that were removed don't address core academic issues such as teaching, reading, science, and math. Here's more of what we've seen on this debate.
We have got to get the focus back on academics.
With more than half of Arizona elementary students not proficient in math or reading, Superintendent Tom Horn says his first priority is to dispatch improvement teams to assist lower-performing schools.
So we can get the test scores back up.
Horn has canceled scheduled presentations for teachers on trauma and social emotional learning and did away with the Department of Education's Diversity, Equity, and Inclusion Act.
There's more to life than test scores, and we learned during COVID that the emotional and mental well-being of students is very important too.
That was a parent in the East Valley and the husband of a school teacher. Are we allowing unnecessary concerns to guide what's best for students when it comes to social and emotional learning? Isn't some of it okay for training purposes? Let's start with you, Margaret.
Well, with social emotional learning, if I took it when I was teaching and also a principal, I had counselors, I had social workers. And as a teacher and a principal, if a student needed to talk about something very personal, that's what I would do as a teacher or principal, is make sure that they had access to someone that they could talk to regarding some kind of a social emotional issue. Today's social emotional learning, there's a lot of definitions, which I think that's the biggest problem, is that you can put anything into social emotional learning and say, for example, if you're trying to discipline a child and they tell the teacher, well, you have to use your social emotional learning. Well, the child knows there's a reason why they're being disciplined, either for whatever infraction that they have demonstrated in doing. I think we have lost touch with students. They know what discipline means to them, and they also know that the teacher has to run a smooth, orderly climate in the classroom.
Mari Sol, a lot of parents are saying, "Look, test scores are down historically. We got to get back to the very basics."
Yeah, I think the very basics that we need to get back to is actually funding the schools to be able to have the things that Ms. Dugan is talking about, right? We don't all have counselors. We don't have, I've never worked with a social worker. This has been a 20-year, almost now 30-year trend of underfunding schools. So I would love to have those options, but I don't. And for me, if a student comes in, is upset, is crying, is angry, all I want to be able to do is use a tactic, be able to, hey, let's take a breathe in and breathe out and get focused. And that's really what we've been asked to really to do. It never had a term before, and now it does.
So is this like part of a curriculum, Chris? I mean, is there an institute that provides material to these schools and they say, "Teach this to kids once a day for an hour"? I mean, what is social emotional learning?
Right. Well, I think you've, there's no agreed-upon definition, right? And I think part of the problem, at least from the board perspective, is we've had such, you know, turmoil in the political discourse about, we've loaded a lot onto that term, right? And so you have board members come in and they say, "I, you know, I'm running for a school board to get rid of social emotional learning," or whatever. And then they start looking at the counselors and the social workers in the school district, and they say, "You guys shouldn't be saying this," or "You folks shouldn't be saying this or doing this." But in reality, what Superintendent Dugan was talking about is what their job is. They are supposed to deal with these students who are having problems managing their behavior, who are having, they're not, they're not supposed to be and by and large are not, you know, involved in any of this political stuff. And so I think we don't agree on the term, and I think there are folks out there, there are institutes out there, there are organizations out there who have competencies and suggestions about how to do this. And folks go and pick that apart, and they're like, "Oh, I see you use the word equity here. This must be bad. I see you use this word here. This must be bad." And we get embroiled in fights about what material we're using and what words we're using and not what the students need. And that's the issue.
And Joe, as a teacher, I had children come to me, and they were upset. Of course, you use your common sense as a teacher. You help them get through whatever situation they're having. If I couldn't, I would, of course, refer them. But they act as if teachers never have dealt with kids that have problems in the classroom. We've done that forever, but we didn't call it social emotional learning. It was just caring about your student and listening to them and helping them get back on course. But today, social emotional learning, as we've all probably can agree, there's so many definitions that people throw at us, and there's examples that we've been given that they've been told, use your social emotional learning techniques.
Couldn't the superintendent then find at least a social emotional learning training course that he does agree with, he doesn't believe, goes into what he calls CRT, and say, "Let's do this"? Because I think we all agree, teachers need some training to help students self-regulate, to help students communicate when they're in a height of anxiety.
Right. Well, we do have character counts, and those are techniques that you can talk to kids about if they get upset with an individual. You talk about them respecting each other for their own values and their, who they are as a person. Those were things I taught in the classroom for classroom management. I taught behaviors. I taught kids, when somebody's talking, don't interrupt, be courteous. And those were all behaviors that I taught. And I don't think those were ever felt under the umbrella of the social emotional learning. What I've heard in social emotional learning is that they're talking to kids about their sexual identity. I don't even know how that fits in to social emotional.
What's the school, what's the primary organization that teaches social emotional learning or that trains schools? What is it?
The, the one that folks most often refer to as CASL.
CASL.
And that's the one that, that comes under scrutiny a lot for some terms that they use, but it's a framework that folks can use to sort of, you know, structure their own social emotional learning stuff. You don't, it's not a mandate. You don't have to say, "Oh, we use CASL, and so therefore we do all this stuff." It's, it's just a resource.
Yeah, they can.
I mean, it brings a larger conversation about the fact that we're not, we've become so untrustful of educators and really, really not giving them the respect that they deserve. You know, I was a single mother and taught eighth grade for 15 years. I used to go early and drop off my son to a school full of people I trusted, my child, my six-year-old child, and then hurry up and go to my school, in which I would teach 160 other people's children, keep them safe, make sure they're focused, always teaching about history and social studies, and coached softball, and then turn around and go back and get my son. There was never a question on who, what specific words they were using, and, because I trusted them. And all these conversations about, well, I'm not sure, or one person told me, is eroding the trust that parents and educators have had for years. And it's not going to be a healthy ending when we continue to divide folks and not try to bring them together.
Is CASL banned now? If a district has CASL in their district?
No, no, it's not. It's just, because it's not an actual curriculum. It's just an organization that provides a framework, right? And so, and I think that, that one of the things that's interesting about this is that, you know, we have always, you know, the things that, when Margaret was a teacher, you know, were different, and we have systematized education in such a way and tried to make it a science, which in a lot of ways is good, but we start to, what used to be classroom management is now social emotional learning tools because that's how we create frameworks, right?
You're saying it's just being labeled differently.
What, what, what used to be, hey, learn your student and give them what they need to learn is now response to intervention, right? Like, there are names for things now because back in 2001, we decided mostly that what we had to do was hold schools accountable, make sure students were achieving, and if they weren't achieving, we needed to dig in there and find out why. And so we start building an industry around making sure that we're progressing students. Trusting teachers is a big part of that, and it used to be the only part, right? And now it's like, we need to make sure that we're moving students along. And when you do that, you create a market for techniques and strategies and all these things.
Hence, you get CASL and others.
Right. And so now we're seeing, you know, a bunch of people, the more that's out there, the more you can pick apart. And now, and here we are. I mean, that's not a direct line, but it's a big part of it.
Well, I think parents found out what was going on in the classroom through COVID, and that's where I think it began, the conversation. What is really being taught in the classroom besides academics that the parents, of course, were very upset about?
They certainly took a heightened interest, for sure, in what was happening in our schools. And in fact, now there's a lot more pressure on our school leaders. There's less patience for them in many ways. There's a shorter leash. And actually, since we've reported, since COVID, we've seen a lot of superintendents leave. Chandler Superintendent Camille Castile told me that all of a sudden she felt the world's problems were at the doorstep of schools. She felt like it was a no-win situation for these school leaders, referring to what you're saying. And in just the last two months, we've seen three superintendents ousted. In Buckeye, Lori Schuff of the Liberty Elementary School District was pushed out. 3TV reported one of the three board members who voted for her gone boasted in an email that they flipped the board and they wanted a more conservative superintendent. In Apache Junction, Heather Wallace was forced out two weeks ago from the Apache Junction Unified School District. The three board members there who approved the severance were all supported by the local Republican Party. Two of them are now targets of a recall election, which is also worth noting, many Republicans are supporting because they feel like this was wrong. In Casa Grande, Anna Battle of the Casa Grande High School District was fired. The former superintendent there blamed her termination on, quote, "assessable of disinformation on social media." All of these have a common theme. There's not a specific smoking gun for why the superintendent was removed, that we know of. In all, politically conservative board members voted them out, and in all, longtime community members said it was unjustified. At least many did. So are superintendents being rightly terminated because they aren't getting the job done, going back to, hey, let's get back to reading, writing, and arithmetic? Or are unrealistic expectations putting them in a no-win situation? I mean, this is unusual, right, to see these abrupt firings?
Yeah, and I think in this instance specifically, all the ones you just mentioned, these are not, you know, we uncovered some sort of financial malfeasance or, you know, they didn't, they were poorly managing the district and the employees were terribly unhappy or whatever. This is, those specific ones, I think, are a result of, of an attitude that folks have developed towards school districts, which is, oh, and it goes both ways, like, oh, there's conservatives in charge of the school district, we need liberals in charge of the school district. There's liberals in charge of the school district, we need conservatives in charge of the school district. And it starts there, like, and then once you get, once you get the majority of your side, you assume that the people who are in charge are not your friends, are not on your side, and you have to make a change. And so those superintendents, I think, were victims of that. We don't know exactly all the circumstances, but we haven't seen anything on the report, in the reporting that says that it's anything other than a disagreement of philosophy.
Sure.
And, and that is not, from our perspective, not great governance, right? We, we don't want to whip saw school districts back and forth. Every time a different majority comes in, we get a new superintendent. Because speaking of achievement, that will destroy it. If you don't have consistency in leadership, every two, three years, you're getting a new superintendent, you're not going, you have no chance.
I can, I can tell you, Glendale, and of course, you went there, in the Glendale Union, I had a superintendent there, it was for 14 years.
And that's what we want, right?
He was focused on academics, and that's what we knew that our charge was as teachers and administrators. Again, I think today, political ideology from the left has come in and penetrated into our schools, and I think that's really taking teachers into really a war zone for them. And it's unfair to them that, that these boards change at the whim, and I understand, but there for many, many years, nobody even knew the political affiliation of board members.
Sure.
Now they do. And when you've had one party running school boards for years and the test scores going down, and then all of the political ideology being thrust into the schools, that's where you have parents from the other party rising up.
Is that fair, though, to say one party was running it? Because from, from my understanding, I mean, school board members generally will tell you, when we get in there, we really don't get into partisan politics, at least historically.
They didn't. They didn't. I think they do today.
And is it possible, though, a narrative is changing more than what's actually happening within, and I use Apache Junction as the example. You've got these Republicans who are coming out and saying, we had Margaret, or excuse me, Heather Wallace, 20-plus years in our district. She grew in the district. We made her superintendent. We love her. Two years in, all of a sudden, this new board is putting her out for no real discernible reason.
But that's what school board members do. That's their number one reason to be a school board member is to hire and fire superintendent.
You're right. And you get who you vote for.
As I said, ours was there for 14 years. Why? Because we had high academic scores year after year after year.
You get who you vote for. Could we see more recalls like this? Is this, is this something that's going to be unusual, or could we see other backlash?
Yeah, I think that, I think that, you know, from our perspective, we teach, we, we encourage boards to engage in delivery of processes, right? And, and make a good decision for your district that's going to benefit student achievement, right? And I want to be clear that when I said liberals and conservatives in charge, there is, there, I'm not talking about the superintendents. You know, there is no indication that any of those people were anything but professional educators. They weren't out, you know, at the local Democrat or Republican meeting doing whatever, right? So I want to be very clear about that. But in terms of, if you're going to, as an elected official, make a stand and say, "We're Republicans, we're Democrats, we're for Republican stuff, we're for Democrat stuff," you're going to invite scrutiny from the other side. And yeah, if you make decisions that the other side doesn't like, you're going to be facing a recall potentially. And that's what's happening. And so we try to very, very diligently tell board members, you are not in this for partisan politics, you are in this to govern the school district. And if you do that, you'll be okay. If you don't, you're going to have to face larger political consequences, and, and we're seeing that now.
Uh, so recently, as we mentioned, Travis Grantham, a representative, said that he wants to get politics out of schools. Depending on which side of the spectrum you're on, it could mean a completely different thing. I should add, there are, is a group of Republicans in Apache Junction who absolutely supported the ouster of the superintendent, and they feel like, uh, that it was too political of an environment. So Chris, when did this element of politics in, in schools begin? Has it always been there? Or is it really since COVID that we've seen it articulated?
Well, I think that, yeah, it's always been there. I mean, people have been political since forever, right? And so people, historically, what you'd see is you'd have people get disgruntled and say, I'm going to run for school board, I'm going to fire that superintendent, or whatever. They get on the board and they sit there and they figure out that, hey, it's not just, you know, these four other people have been here, these three other people have been here, they like the superintendent, these are the things that are going on. Really what we do is approve contracts, do the budget, we do strategic planning, we do all this stuff. Now we see board members running in blocks. They see two members, three members running together, and their sole goal is vote for all three of us. When we get on there, we're going to make a change.
Is that a good thing, Margaret? If they're running as a block, supporting Tom Horn's beliefs?
Sure. I mean, if they're for academics and increase of learning, I think, yes, that's their job as a school board member, to make sure that the academic standards of Arizona are being taught, uh, by the teachers in the classroom and administrators are well-versed on what those standards are and evaluate teachers based on what they're being paid for. I think that's great. Parents need to be part of the discussion. And as a board member, they, they should be running for school board members.
Meanwhile, in the Washington Elementary School District, we saw that board end a partnership with the Arizona Christian University, where students in the university's elementary educational program, they would student teach, they would shadow teachers. The board terminated the partnership because of ACU's religious beliefs on marriage and sexuality. Correct me if I'm wrong, but there were no official complaints lodged against Arizona Christian, but the school district said, hey, we're going to go our separate, separate ways anyways. Um, you know, is this going too far the other way? Was this justified? Could we agree that a board should allow, you know, a private school that has their own beliefs to have, hold those beliefs if they're still doing a good job in the classroom?
Well, they're violating somebody's First Amendment, freedom of religion to go to a Christian school, just because they went to a Christian.
And there is a lawsuit about this.
Yeah, and they, they should be able to teach. I mean, this whole country was built on Christian Judeo beliefs, and to say, because I went to a Christian university, I cannot teach, uh, student teach in this school? I, I, to tell you the truth, I was mortified. That's why I think we are in a crisis right now in education, when school board members, like the one that made that statement, that because you're Christian, because you're Jewish, because you're even, I guess you can go agnostic, you can't work here, that has nothing to do with a teacher being an excellent teacher in the classroom.
Is it possible the Washington district went too far here?
Well, I think that that's the part of being a school board. They were elected to lead in that way. It wasn't just one person who voted to end the contract. It was a unanimous decision. So they were elected, that's what the decision was. It wasn't secretive. They did public comment for several times before it caught, caught everyone's awareness. And this was a decision that they made. And so if we're trying to keep politics out of schools, to, to Grantham's point, that's, uh, these two instances are bringing politics to schools. As a history teacher and as somebody who actually does teach politics and understanding the different parts of politics, um, we never bring in our religion in the classroom. We never talk about who I voted for. That doesn't happen. And I'll be honest, parents who talk to me, who work with me, they know that. They didn't wait till COVID, when things were locked down, to all of a sudden say, oh, Ms. Garcia is teaching this. They knew what I was teaching. Uh, and that's true for every educator across the state. They have access to, uh, our emails, our phone numbers, they know where we work. Uh, I will email parents back at 11 o'clock at night, 2:00 AM, because I have so much to do. Uh, so this disconnect is, uh, being inflamed to cause more discord between the two, instead of spending more time and trying to get us together like we always have been.
In, go ahead.
Now, I just wanted to make, double check. I think that, um, Marisol's exactly right, and that, the board made the decision they made.
Yeah.
And they will live or, or, or die by that decision, right? And that's the beauty of local governance.
Which you could say about any of these other circumstances we are discussing.
But speaking of character, since we were talking about that, I think that it's important to note that those board members had their physical safety threatened as well. And so I think that it's, it's, it's one thing to say, yeah, you know, we disagree with your decision, and this is a, this is a trend that's disturbing and inappropriate, is that these board members are putting their own family's safety at risk sometimes by making the decision, right or wrong, doesn't matter. It's unacceptable, and it happens way too often. And you don't get people to run for school board by threatening them after they make a decision.
Yeah, in fact, in the fall, a teacher at the Peoria Unified District, a high school teacher, teaching an elective science class, human physiology, uh, she was placed on leave and investigated for a student's complaint about a comment she made regarding sexuality and biology. And to your point, you know, the district concluded here that the teacher should keep her job. She was transferred to another school, or she may have reapplied to another school, I can't say for sure. But that teacher stood in front of a board just a week ago and said, this changed my life.
Yep.
This is traumatic. It, uh, changes your community and everyone you talk to. Are teachers just simply getting unfair scrutiny for trying to do their job?
A hundred percent. Um, and last year, we had multiple cases of teachers being doxxed, found at their home, rocks being thrown at their home, spit on at school board meetings, um, saying complete misinformation about them online. It has happened to me repeatedly as a leader. Um, I'm a mom, I have a family, this has to stop, which is why we need to teach kids how to have conversations with each other when they disagree. Um, and we've fortunately been able to bring some of these issues to the Attorney General because it is a higher level of felony when you are attacking or injure, uh, an educator, a public service servant. So, um, this inflaming is no, going nowhere. We are the next election workers, in my opinion. Uh, that it is difficult and it's scary for us to be at school with this misinformation that we're indoctrinating kids and that we're spending this time hurting children, um, is, is really, I believe, one of the biggest reasons why people are leaving the classroom is the disrespect along with the salary, right? But this disrespect has gone way too far, and every public official should be calling it out and, and saying that it's a horror.
Teachers don't deserve that. Should Tom Horn, Superintendent Horn, be calling it out and saying, hey, everyone, you need to show respect that we expect of our students?
Absolutely.
Is he doing it enough? That's, I guess that's the question.
I think he is. I think he is going back again, and I hate to reiterate this over and over, but a teacher's number one job in the schools is to teach what content she was hired to teach. And I think that is not on the front burner as much as it should be, and that's the respect you give your teachers. I had great teachers, so did Superintendent Horn, he talks about it all the time. And we are, uh, part of the problem in our society by having teachers now be the forefront of teaching all this political ideology, uh, that really does not belong in the classroom.
And I, and I know you feel strongly about that.
Very much so.
But in terms of what a teacher deserves to go through if they are accused of something, should the superintendents come out and say, stop this ridiculous rhetoric online? If someone's accused or placed on leave, let the process play out. Don't demonize them on social media, don't demonize them in board, uh, school board meetings, because it is, it is poisonous out there. And teachers don't deserve that.
They do not, and I have a very personal story. I won't say it here because I probably would.
You know what it's like, then?
I know what it's like.
Okay. I think we can all agree that this needs to stop.
But it, but it wasn't from other people, it was from people that should be supporting this teacher and were not. And I believe that is a big issue as well. If teachers are not getting administrative support in their schools for what they do each and every day, that is just as bad. And I think some of the administrators are being pushed and making decisions, um, from either parents or the community where they should stand up and take.
Let's all do better, let's all be better.
Yes.
Finally, on the issue of SROs on campus, we're seeing the debate right now at Phoenix Union, it's played out elsewhere. Let's listen to a recent discussion there.
Arizona leaders pushing for on-campus police officers as a solution to keep students safe at school.
I don't want on my watch to see any, or anybody else's watch for that matter, to see somebody invade a school and be able to shoot people and have, as happened in other massacres.
State school superintendent Tom Horn saying Wednesday, 81% of 614 people recently surveyed across the state support having a police officer on school. A 2021 study by the American Medical Association found that there were three times as many people killed when a school resource officer was present. And in 2019, the Journal of Adolescent Health found no evidence that presence of SROs in schools lessened the severity of school shooting incidents.
He may want to help the schools, but helping the school starts with the root of the problem, which is the guns and how they're getting guns and why they're getting guns. Mental health is really important, too.
Is this out of balance right now? When you talk about social workers and counselors versus an SRO on campus?
Yeah, I mean, I think it's a false choice, right? It's, it's not an either or. It's, it has to be a community-driven, um, discussion. And I think, and our point of view is that the workers, the folks that are actually on the classroom sites, on the sites every day, the janitors, the cafeteria workers, the folks who actually have to live through lockdowns, right? As a mom, having to lock down with 30 kids, knowing that I'm in charge of not only protecting these children, but I may not make it home, that is a real, we have an entire generation who's lived through that. So, if for us, for the AEA, we want to make sure we are at the table and part of these conversations. We're the ones who having to lock the doors, turn off the lights, and train the children. Um, and so it has to be a multifaceted discussion in which all community, including the workers, are part of that conversation.
Absolutely. A Secret Service Threat Assessment Report on School Violence Exam in School Shootings Over a 20-Year Period of Time. Superintendent Horn's office actually put this study out on social media. Now, it showed two-thirds of attackers showed observable behaviors of sadness, isolation, and depression. And, and it said, quote, "that schools should create and promote a safe school climate built on a culture of safety, respect, trust, and emotional support for students," right? So this is the Secret Service report. Uh, I know Superintendent Horn has said he does want a counselor at every school.
Right.
And he does support social workers.
Right.
He wants SROs prioritized right now when it comes to funding. But is this maybe a time where the superintendent should, should say, but instead of just saying, I want a counselor at a school, how about we want a counselor per so many students to make sure that, you know, the students have the emotional support that we know is necessary?
Uh, you're absolutely right. Superintendent Horn does, he, you know, favors counselors. In fact, I think he was a lone vote on, uh, school board when he was.
Long time ago.
A long time ago, so he's always been for. But first and foremost, he, and, and I agree, and a lot of people do, that we need an SRO on every campus. I don't think as a principal, I want to go home and lay my head on my pillow, knowing that I could have put an SRO on my campus and this tragic event happened like it has in Texas and other states. That's, one of the students or a former student came on my campus and, and shot and killed children and teachers. I don't believe any administrator wants to be put in that predicament, nor do the teachers and the parents. They want to make sure you are doing everything you can to help your.
A good, a good SRO can make a great impact on a campus. I've seen it personally.
Right.
I just wonder, are we at a point now where we should be demanding ratios to say, we want to make sure there's a social worker per this? We know that it's recommended, one counselor per 250 students. Arizona has one of the worst ratios in the nation, upwards of 700 or 800 at last check.
Right.
And so I just wonder, do we need to be more specific about what's needed on, on each campus and demand that this happens?
Yeah, I mean, I think that yes is the answer. I mean, if we set a target as a state to say, we're going to get to the national student, student, uh, student-teacher ratio would be nice, but, uh, you know, student-counselor ratio, um, and, but you're, you're going to, your eyes are going to pop when you see the price tag on that, right?
Yeah.
And I think that that leads to a larger conversation about what is our priority in Arizona? And if we're going to prioritize it, let's prioritize it. If not, then, you know, we're left with the programs we have, which is letting districts choose and things like that. And I, and, and I just want to say, I think that if you're at a point where there's a person on your campus with a gun, you have already failed. It's done. It's over. The only question is how bad it's going to be, right? And so the, the, the debate we have is, do we put essentially defensive measures in place where someone can shoot back? Or do we try to minimize the chance of that occurring in the first place? And there's a combination of strategies that work. And, and the reason why we supported as an association, the expansion of the program is because of the ability of educators to implement those different types of programs. And we've seen a lot of different ones work. And, and so I think taking that choice away is, is a problem, but, you know, we'll, we'll continue to, to advocate.
Yeah, and I mean, I think you heard the student just say, like, we should be thinking about, um, uh, all the mental health issues that are happening, why a student feels isolated, what is happening before they walk into the classroom. Um, we try to, as educators, teach kids how to swim and not necessarily try to stop them from drowning. This is where our energy should be, but we really need to have the conversation of how do we fund this? How do we make sure we have great people there, uh, in the classroom and that kids walk in feeling safe, that they are seen, and most importantly, that they are ready to learn? We need all of these things to happen. So again, I just think the false choice issue is a little.
And that Secret Service study said that SROs, when available, should be part of the threat assessment process with the community. Uh, we should note that as well. Uh, I want to quote a student here to end. A student at a recent board meeting, uh, she said, quote, "As students, we are taught to act with respect towards our peers. What I saw at a recent board meeting was not respectful." She was calling out the adults. It was really interesting. How do we tamp down the rhetoric and focus on our kids? And I'll start with you, Margaret. Is, I, I want to repeat this, and maybe Tom Horn should be sitting here to answer this question, but is there anything you can take back to him in regards to the need to tell the state to tone down the rhetoric because our teachers don't deserve some of the harassment and name-calling?
I have been in multiple meetings where Superintendent Horn has talked to parents and said, when you go and approach the board, uh, because you have a concern or you want to talk to them, talk in a very courteous manner, uh, most people will listen to you if you're not screaming at them and accusing them of whatever problem you think that they have. But by being very courteous and calm, you're going to get more from somebody listening. So, and I've heard him multiple times, uh, on the campaign trail.
Now, we just got to keep them off the keyboard when they get home, right?
Well, yeah.
Uh, well, it's good to hear and know. Any final thoughts here from either one of you?
Yeah, I mean, I, I appreciate hearing that. I just think that, um, you know, setting up the 1-800 number and having multiple media interviews about it and making it, this is happening, call this number, when it's, that stoked so much fear in educators, because like, am I allowed to use the word equal? Can I say, so it just made them feel like they were being attacked from a state level, right? And to that child's point, um, you know, they're being, it's being modeled to be disrespectful to educators on a state level. We, we are, we had, now have Governor Hobbs, who's very aware of the issues happening in public schools, supports public education. Uh, and I've talked to Superintendent Horn about this, is just wanting him to be thoughtful about some of the words that you use, and when you're claiming that this is happening and you need to call this number, it really does amp up stuff instead of tampering it down. And I know he knows that, but it just doesn't help when it's used to, and we're the ones who are being targeted. So I just wish we could stop doing that and think about policies instead of people.
We've also had teachers thank us that we do have this hotline because they're not doing anything that they feel that's wrong in the classroom. They don't use any inflammatory words. So if you're not using any critical race theory or words that, you know, that kids are going to take home, then you have nothing to worry about. But there are teachers that are, and some teachers saying, thank you, because I want to be not put into the whole teacher pool.
They support the program.
They support that people are being called out. They don't want to be part of that.
Okay. Final thought here?
Yeah, I would just say that, two things. One, if you're looking at what's going on in a classroom, just because you don't see your politics reflected in the classroom, doesn't mean that there are other people's politics in the classroom either, right? And so I think that's like, if, like, oh, I'm not hearing what I want to hear, they must be hearing something that I don't agree with. That's, in 99% of the cases, you're just not hearing it because it's not there and neither is anybody else, right? And I think with regard to folks who are looking at school boards and who want to serve on school boards, who want to advocate towards school boards, I think the thing that needs to happen is, and there will be reasonable disagreements about approaches, that's 100% of it. But if you encourage your school board, and if your school board member, keep your focus on the student and their learning environment. And that will mean addressing the needs of students so they showed up prepared to learn. That looks a lot different than other places. That's why we provide kids food. That's why we look at, you know, economic indicators. That's why we do all kinds of things. And so it's not, reading, writing, math, social studies is the end goal, but so many factors impact that, and that is the mission of the school district. And if you keep your focus on making sure that students are able and ready to learn, you will have a better conversation.
I will just end to tell the school board members out there, thank you for your service. I mean, we should point out, they don't get paid, anything. And they are giving their time to try to help shape the futures of the young lives of our state. So thank you to those school board members. Please be part of the conversation and provide us feedback here at 12 News if you have something you want to let us know about. And as we move forward, let's hope that the debates are done, the spirited debates, which should happen, as you mentioned, that they're done with respect all around. And thank you so much for being with us and contributing to this discussion.
Thank you.
Thanks for having us.